Five, four. Welcome to the board meeting session for Ackerman Charter School District on January 13th, 2021. I just wanted to give you a quick preface to say that if there's any technical issues, please be patient. We will try to return to the normal online session as quickly as we can. Thank you. What can I use?
Thank you, Mr. Byram. Okay, so a couple announcements first. An executive order N dash 29 dash 20, teleconference flexibility 1 dot 1. This meeting is being held pursuant to the procedures established. An executive order N dash 29 dash 20 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17, 2020. All board members may attend the meeting by teleconference. This meeting will be a virtual meeting only. The public may observe and address the meeting via the instructions in item 2.1. Number two, public access, the Ackerman Charter School Board of Trustees Meeting 2.1. The public will have access to the Ackerman Charter School Board of Trustees Meeting via HTTPS colon backslash backslash V I T dot L Y backslash Bowman Live. For those individuals who wish to make a public comment, please do so by completing the form here prior to 6:45 P M. HTTPS colon backslash backslash V I T dot L Y backslash A C S D, public comments. A moderator for the meeting will read your comments for the record. Should this board meeting encounter any security breach or inappropriate issues, the meeting will be ended immediately. The Ackerman Charter School Board of Trustees has taken measures to set restrictions and security features to protect meeting participants from inappropriate content or remarks. In the event that a meeting is breached, the eating, the meeting will end immediately. The board values and welcomes civil and concise communications at its forms, informants deliberations, mission and vision. Individuals addressing the board are asked to be respectful and avoid remarks that reflect adversely on the character or motives of any person or his or her race, religion, gender, political views, or economic status. Profanity will not be permitted. Speakers heard on a particular subject from a previous meeting will be heard after all new speakers have addressed the board if time remains. Members of the audience who wish to address the board on items on or not on the agenda will need to complete the Google form before 6:45 P M. The board shall hear comments from the audience prior to the formal discussion by board members of the agenda topic under consideration. Formal discussion is the board's time to discuss and is uninterrupted. Regular scheduled meetings of the board shall provide an opportunity for public comment on items not listed on the agenda under public comment. Per the Brown Act, public comment is an opportunity for the Board of Trustees to listen to district constituents. The board may not, the board may not respond to comments or answer questions during the public comment time. The board may, at its discretion, refer items to the administration for follow up or place topics on a future board agenda. The board president will call your name at the appropriate time for your comments. Please, well, there's no podium. Okay, you all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. At this time, we'll have a roll call vote. Michael Bellis?
Here.
Mark Halbert?
Here.
Justin Rednall?
Here.
David Slane?
Here.
Rob Congezer, here. This time is a time for public comments. And I'm my understanding that we do not have any public comments. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So then moving on to 4.0, Lauren Wilkinson will present the LPAC.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. After I share my screen, if you could give me a thumbs up or just yes, I can see it. Yes. Just a second and you should see.
Looks good, Laura.
Got it.
Great. So this is my annual, very nice. And let me know if my internet gets wonky. I live up in Colfax in the tree, so sometimes it's not as clear. This is my annual presentation on understanding the LPAC. And the LPAC stands for the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California. So about the LPAC, so what the test is, is it measures a student's understanding of English when English is not their primary language. This test is used to give information to the teachers about the child's areas of strength and areas of growth needed. And it also communicates to the child's parents where their areas of strength is and where their areas of growth is needed. Well, why do students take this LPAC? First of all, this is a required test from the state of California. So every student who is in a language other than English will take this test in the state of California. It's also important to identify when students might need additional help in understanding school ton, school content when they speak a language other than English. So it's very important to give the test because of the information we get about the student and their understanding of English. The LPAC has two assessments. It has the initial assessment and the summative assessment. So these are two different assessments that are given at different times of the year. So we'll start by talking off, talking about the initial. So the initial assessment is given one time when a student first registers in a school in California. It's typically given in kindergarten because that's normally when a student enters school for the first time. So for example, when I gave the initial this year, I gave it to all kindergarteners. But the initial assessment can be given kindergarten through 12th grade. If a student moves to California for the first time and they speak a language other than English, they will be given the initial LPAC. So this test is given kindergarten up through 12th grade. The test is only though I said given one time. After the test is given, it will be determined if the child is an English learner or if they are considered fluent in English and we call that IFEP, so more educational acronyms. That stands for Initial Fluent English Proficient. So we're kind of looking for two different scores and those are the only scores we get from the initial. They tell us if they're an English learner or if they're proficient in English and will not be considered an English learner. So the summative LPAC is a test that is given in a different part of the year. It's kind of given the same time as CASP test. It's kind of given in the spring. And if a student is identified as an English learner, they will take this test yearly until they are reclassified as being English proficient. So the testing window opens up in February and it ends in May 31st. So we use the summative to kind of measure child's progress to make sure that their levels of English is increasing, that they're able to access the content in the classroom. So that's why we give the summative and we measure students' progress until they can be reclassified as English proficient. And that can happen anytime first grade through 12th grade. So a student can take a test one year and be considered proficient in English, or they might need to take it three or four or five years. These are the four components of the test. This test has listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Speaking is my favorite part to administer. I get to give it one on one and just to hear the kids' responses is just, is the best part of the test. It will have the same exact components, whether the child is in kindergarten or up through 12th grade. It will just be grade level appropriate. So every child that takes or every student that takes the summative LPAC, it will have four components to it. The test for grades third through 12th is completely computer based, so just similar to CASP. If the student is in kindergarten through second, there's some computer time and some paper and pencil still. That LPAC can only be given by a trained examiner. I go through about eight hours of training every year to renew my certification to give the test. Plus I have to calibrate my scores to make sure that my scores are accurate. So I get, every year I go through at least 16 hours worth of training to be able to administer this test correctly. The test is given, I can give it in groups. For example, reading or writing, I can have groups of students come in and I launch it like I do the CASP and the students at different grade levels can all be taking a reading assessment on the computer. Speaking is done individually, one on one, so I can hear the students' responses. This year, when I gave the initial LPAC, I was given remotely or in person. So actually they enabled an interface where I could log in just kind of in this format and give the LPAC. This, parents have the option, whatever they felt comfortable with, they could bring the student in and I tested some in person and then I tested some online. So it's nice to be give parent options of what they felt was best for their child at that time. The initial LPAC can be given anytime from July 1st to June 30th. If I have a student enroll in Bowman today and they speak a language other than English, I have 30 days to give them the initial LPAC. This year we were given an extension of 45 days to give the LPAC the initial just due to the school closures and just navigating how remote administration would work. The summative LPAC will open up very shortly, February 1st, and I have till May 31st to assess the English learners on our campus. Each parent and child's, and their child's teacher receives this report. This report will give their lot of great information in it. Each child will receive an overall score of one through four. It's kind of their overall level. Four is the highest. One is the area where most work is needed. The scores are broken down. I mentioned that listening, speaking is one component and that is the oral language score. And then a separate score is the writing and reading. So those two tests, they kind of work together and we get an overall score. So if a teacher at Bowman has an English learner in the classroom, they are given this information. This information is mailed home to the student's parents in English and in the parent's primary language as well. Get a lot of good information from this report. It's very user friendly, a big improvement how it used to be. The scores you're seeing now are actually two years old from spring 2019. The LPAC was waived last year due to school closures. So I don't have any new data to give at this time. The summative LPAC will be given in the spring, so I will be able to present that data next, in the next school year. But I do not have any fresh data due to the LPAC, the summative LPAC being waived due to COVID. So the testing window opens up very soon and I'm trained and ready to go. So I look forward to beginning that process in a couple months. So that's my presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
So the level four students, are they considered still needing work? Or have they, are those the ones that have essentially graduated?
If they're, if they score a level four, that is one measure we use to see if they can be reclassified. They also have to have a good score on the CASP test and be doing well in their four classes. And we talk to the parent of the child to see if they think they're ready. We talk to the child's teacher and I talk to the child as well. So it's kind of a very much a group decision of when we're going to reclassify. But we do have district measures in place, kind of those points. But the big point is a four is what we look for because that means that they have strong skills to be able to access the core curriculum in English.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a consent agenda item 5.0.
So, so two things in the consent agenda that are unique. One is our, our DTS contract. That's something we use to do all our accountability for the state. They do a great job. Most, I think most districts use DTS across the state of California. Really is, they're the kind of the collection house where they collect the data and put it into the templates and all of that so we can present. And then the second thing is our, our energy contract with Constellation. So we get the discounted energy. This is who we've used for the, for all the time I've been here and that contract was up. So we're bringing it back for another year.
Okay, and this is just for a one year extension on that or?
And is it a one year or is it three years?
Trying to.
It's for three years.
For three.
That was the previous contract was for three years. So we went ahead with that again.
Okay. Oh yeah, right there, 24. Does anybody else have any questions?
You're, you're muted, Michael. Looks like you might be making a motion, Michael. You're still muted.
Sorry about that. I had a question on the warrants. There was one from Placer High School for the school nurse. Are we sharing, are we using their services for that?
We, we have an MOU with the high school district for our nursing services. So they employ our nurse and we pay them and use, yeah, so exactly. It's just a, it's an MOU. We've worked out. Our nurse actually serves us, Colfax, and I believe either Placer Hills or Forest Hill. I think it's Placer Hills. We all share her.
How much, how often is she on campus roughly?
Uh, three, two to three times a month. Remember, we have a, we have a full time or, you know, pretty much full time health assistant. But Mrs. Serrano, the school nurse is, I mean, if we need her, we, you know, we can reach her anytime.
The payment was for, it was half the, half of our annual payment.
So the payment we pay is just the, for the salary that she's paid working for us. It's not a, it's not something they're making money on or anything like that.
Did you say her, her last name was Serrano?
Yes.
What's her first name?
Jennifer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Also move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. David's.
Motion by Michael Bellis, second by Mr. Slane. Roll call vote. Michael Bellis?
Aye.
Mark Halbert?
Aye.
Justin Rednall?
Aye.
David Slane?
Aye.
And Rob Congezer, aye. Okay, 6.0 correspondence. Do we have correspondence? I didn't see.
We don't have any.
Okay, then, reports. Do we have a technology report?
Not tonight.
Oh man, I was so looking forward to Ian telling us for hours and hours and hours. All right, then cafeteria reports and kids' club. Yeah, kids' club is looking interesting.
Yeah, it's, obviously we're way down in our profits.
Right.
You know, in our earnings because of COVID. We're not, we're only open for essential employees' children.
Right.
Kelly, is that going to change when, when the new schedule comes out?
Like, no, it won't. It, that wouldn't change unless we got to orange, potentially orange tier level to where the kids could come back. But the, the, the difficulty is, is space with where to, where to put the kids and still keep them from, you know, in social distancing and not mixing cohorts. It's the mixing is the, is the hard part with kids' club.
Yeah.
So we're required to do it for essential workers. But it's been frowned upon, at least up until now, to try to do something like that across the board due to the mixing of cohorts.
I, I assume that was going to be the answer. Okay.
Yeah. Although I'll tell you that the CDPH either today they did or tomorrow are releasing 27 new guidelines for schools. So we will see what that tells us when we get it. Yeah. Just when you think you're done, you know?
Yeah, right.
Attendance is lower than we'd like. Or sorry, enrollment, I should say.
Yeah, you know, it, it is, but better than most districts at this point due to, you know, with COVID.
Right.
We're hanging in there. Our parents have been pretty loyal.
Good. Hopefully we continue to earn that. Okay, assistant principal.
Good evening. I just have two updates this evening. The first is the LCAP which Mrs. Wilkinson discussed. We're ready to start working on that. We're awaiting the new template from the CDE. If you remember, the templates expired, the, the format that we were using expired in, in spring of 2020. So we were supposed to start a new template this current year. Well, they, as you know, they, they said we didn't have to do the LCAP this year. And so we're, we'll be starting that new template this spring. So we're waiting the approval of that. They said it would be by the end of January. Some of the possible additional requirements for that would be a COVID safety plan, which we're currently working on as well. And that's, it, it's really all about the precautions and, and protocols we've put in place to keep our employees and our students safe. We will continue to report out on our progress to our goals from our LCAP from the 1920 school year that, that, that we ended last year. It's still required stakeholder input from staff, all of our faculty, parents, students, any of that stakeholder input of how we are performing. And as you know, that, that all this information helps us develop our budget priorities and our program offerings. So that's a process we'll be starting in the spring and you'll be seeing the final product in June, but you'll be updated along the way. We also have a calendar update. We typically start doing that this month. But because of our MOU, we have suspended adjunct duties, which is where we invite the staff in. I've invited the three people that have previously participated in the calendar, making of the calendar to see if they wanted to participate. And if not, we'll open it up to other staff members to see if they would like to participate. Placer, at this point, we can't find their 20, their upcoming year calendar. I think this, this year currently was the last year of their three year calendar, so they haven't done theirs either. We will always follow theirs closely just so we, our enrollment, that we're starting that process and we'll move that, hopefully have that for you by March. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Superintendent report.
All right, so next Tuesday is the day our new schedule starts. To support that, need to single out Ian Byram and Louis Uribe, his technology assistant. We purchased these poly cameras that will sit in, in the classrooms and actually they, they track the teacher. Teachers can zoom them in with the remote. They can have a blank screen go on if they need to talk to a student privately. They're, they're pretty neat. And so if you remember our, our proposal, what we're doing is we're going to have our kids, whoever is at home, be able to log in and be part of the classroom experience just virtually while the teacher's teaching in person. Our teachers have had them for about a week to experiment with them. It will take us a little time just because they're new and, but we're excited for this new schedule. Remember, we increased the school hours by a couple hours a day. So we're going to be up to about four, roughly four to four and a half hours a day, depending on which grade level you're in. And then every other Wednesday is a rotating Wednesday for the A and B groups. So they'll have one extra in-person day every other week. We've had a little bit of people wanting to shift between cohorts since the proposal came out, but not more than just a couple per grade level. Some have wanted to come back from C cohort to do more in person. And some have wanted to go to C cohort because of the spike of COVID. So we're trying to accommodate everybody and keep them happy, but all the feedback I've received from, from our parent community, no matter which side are they on, thought it was a a good approach because it was measured and still kept social distancing and followed the tiers of the county and, and those things. So we're on, we're on point to start Tuesday. Governor proposed a budget and part of that budget was this grant proposal. The jury's still out. There's a lot of pushback on this grant proposal. You may have heard of it. He's proposing grants where you can get $450 per student extra in money if, if you need to open schools, but you're already open, you don't get anything. So the big districts that aren't open are saying, well, it's not enough money and it's not because if, if, for example, if we had $450 per pupil, that wouldn't even fund the student testing that the grant is requiring you do. Student COVID testing, the grant is requiring you do. We couldn't even get through the rest of the year of paying for the tests with that amount of money. So the legislature now is going to work on it and we'll see what happens with that grant part. But, but the grant is a, just a small part of his overall budget. His overall proposed budget that came out last week is, is actually $14.9 billion more than the budget that was approved last year. It includes rescinding almost all of the deferrals immediately. It wouldn't rescind the spring, but you would get this spring's deferrals in July. You'd get it right away. It includes a 3.84 cost of living increase. It also has pension relief in there that we know that, if you remember, we pay for our teachers' retirement and our classified retirement. So in his proposal, our STIRS amount would go from 18.1% to 15.9, so two and a half percent or so. And the, and the PERS would go from 24.9 to 23 in his proposal. So there's, that means less money we have to spend, give back to the state. So if that makes it. Couple other highlights in here is there is no hold harmless for ADA next year. So everybody's going to want to have their enrollment. All the superintendents in Placer County that I speak with every week, we're all predicting even in the next fall, you're going to still have, have to have a distance learning option for your families. Just because of the rate of vaccines, distribution and that students aren't vaccinated, there isn't a student vaccine at this point. So we're expecting to be able to receive money from the governor's office for that. He actually has some of that built into the side for, for that. So I would expect Bowman to be offering some kind of distance learning option for next year. And it might be something that, in speaking with Kristen, you know, going forward, it might be something the trustees want to look at making long term because it's a way you could grow your enrollment without bringing people onto the site that's not big enough to hold them, if that makes sense to you. A lot of it's going to be determined by what happens in the next year. And it would be a, a little bit of a minefield to do it because the other districts might be a little upset. Because you could really start getting a lot of kids that way. However, I think everybody's going to have to have that option next year in all the districts. So if you do it better than everybody else, it might be something you just continue. But that's kind of down the road talk. I wanted to give the trustees an update on COVID cases with what we know at Bowman. Now, again, I want to emphasize what we know. We've had, what we know as far as students or staff on campus, we've had 11 known cases since October 2nd. And in our con, contract tracing, contact tracing, I'll just go through them. The first one on 11-2 was a first grader, unknown, but it was Halloween, they think. On 11-5, it was a fourth grader, got it from a sibling. 11-23, another fourth grader got COVID on Thanksgiving break. On 11-29, a staff member got it from a family member who works in a hospital. On 12-3, a third grader got it from their parent. 12-1, a staff member got it from a family member at Thanksgiving. 12-9, a staff member got it from a friend in a social gathering. 12-18, we had two staff members get it, but not know where they got it, but it was over winter break on both of them. So it didn't affect school. On 1-5, we had a kindergarten get it from family on winter break. And on 1-4, we had a second grader get it from a family member over winter break. The, the one thing that emphasized on this is none of them have stated they got it at school. Now, that's all good, but just know that we don't know everybody. We only know what we can find out and what we hear and what parents tell us. So we continue to be as vigilant as we can on this and track this, and we provide this same tracking I just read to you to staff, so they know. We have to be careful that we're following HIPAA laws and not giving names and things like that out to staff. We're small enough that the staff all tell each other, but that's okay if they want to talk about themselves, but we just can't do it on our end. Important topics that upcoming in the next few months, well, I'm sure we'll be covering. Number one, one will be vaccines for teachers. And what, what the county is going to do with that and where, when that's going to happen. Spring, we'll talk, be talking about staffing and talking about retirements and things like that. One of the big things that's already starting to be discussed is the learning loss that our kids are experiencing. And I'll tell you what I think we're seeing a lot of is what we already would knew what would happen is our, our kids who have come from great families and stable environments are doing okay. They're adapting, overcoming. They got supportive parents who are doing what they need to do to help. Our kids who are in more of a socioeconomic downturn situation, or maybe a single parent, they're doing all they can potentially, but they're typically your ones that struggle the most in school because maybe parents working when they get home from school, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They don't have the education background to help, et cetera. Well, there are kids who normally struggle, they're struggling more because they're either not attending, or they don't, it's harder for them to understand, or whatever. So some of the, some of the thing and things in the governor's budget is to propose money for summer school to try to address that. So we're looking, you know, see what happens with the budget and see what we can do with, with that kind of thing. One of the things we're emphasizing with, with our staff, we, when we met with them yesterday, was intervention is not optional. It's not good enough to just say the kid didn't show up to the intervention time I had scheduled. We want the teachers to call and follow up and say, hey, Rob was supposed to be here yesterday. Where, you know, where was he? Okay, I will need him here today. And just kind of, kind of bird dog him and stay on it, because we'd want that for all our kids. So, so we're hoping that, that effort that we're all putting in will, will help address that. Our psychologists reach out to a lot of these parents when the kids aren't showing up and, and try to talk to them. And, and a lot of times what we hear from the parent, those parents is, hey, I'm doing the best I can. You know, I'm working, a single dad, I'm a single mom, I work out of town, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I mean, all the things that can get in the way. And then frankly, we have some, some that are just, they've just checked out. And, and they're not necessarily, some of those aren't necessarily low economic status. They're, you know, very well to do. They've just checked out saying, we'll check in when you have, have real school. We don't want to do anything to the virtual learning. So, but we're, we're doing our best to address it. I mentioned earlier in the attendance report, we're actually doing a lot better than almost all the surrounding districts as far as losing students. We're, we're, our families are pretty loyal to us, and I think, I think our new schedule will help, help keep them. That's what I have for you tonight.
Kelly, this is Mark. Have you heard any, just kind of a rough timeline for vaccines for staff? Are they anticipating sometime this spring, or?
Yeah, I, I would say by March.
Okay.
You know, they're talking about teachers being in, in the education. I shouldn't say teachers because I get in trouble because it's got to be school staff. It's got to be everybody. It can't just be teachers. They're talking about hopefully early February to late, or to early March. But it's just the way the vaccines are rolling out, you know, everybody's kind of struggling trying to figure that out, how they're going to do that the most efficiently. The, I will tell you, there's a lot of debate on this already in education circles. The LA Unified Superintendent came out and said he doesn't see school opening till all the kids get a vaccine. Problem with that is there is no kid vaccine. It hasn't, it hasn't gone through trials yet. And it's, I'm sure there's going to get a lot of lawyers involved because some people probably refuse to take the vaccine. And so if a school district has, has staff members, teachers, classified, whatever, that refuse to take a vaccine, now is the district liable to the children's families because their staff member may be potentially spreading COVID because they didn't get the vaccine. So the vaccine, though, it's a, you know, it's, it's a huge thing, and obviously, it's going to help us all get back to normal at some point. There's going to still be some hurdles to cross here in the spring with lawyers and attorneys and all that. So stay tuned. And I, you know, I'm not, I'm not so much talking about Bowman so much, I think. I think it's going to be a much bigger, broader discussion at the state level. You know, the, there's a whole lot of people out there who don't believe in vaccinations of any kind. And they fought tooth and nail a few years ago to not require kids to have vaccines to go to school, and they lost. And there are still a few little, little gaps that, that people can use through doctors to get around taking a vaccine. But, you know, to say that a kid has to have a vaccine to go to school, I, I see that as a big legal fight when it comes to this vaccine, because this vaccine hasn't been developed for kids yet. So, but they have a right to go to school. So it's going to be interesting, way above my pay grade. So.
Do, do we have any idea on number of teachers at Bowman that are willing to, or wanting to get the vaccine versus those that are not?
No, and I, I'm not, I'm not inclined, Rob, to ask at this point. You know, I think, I think everybody's probably considering that already in their own lives. You know, it's, it's not worth right now, because I don't know what I don't know, of getting people upset about hypotheticals, or getting people positional, whether it's teachers or classified staff. You know, until we see what, what we can require and what we can't. You know, most of the attorneys are, are still just dealing with the workman's comp side of all this. They haven't got to the vaccination side of it.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've got packets and packets and webinars after webinar on, from attorneys and legalese on, on the workman's comp side. The vaccine is going to be a whole nother ballgame for attorneys to debate.
Yep.
This is Mike speaking. I, I kind of just think in the end, the state's going to tell us what we can, cannot do when it comes to the vaccines and who, who needs to take them and who not. This is a personal opinion, but, you know, I'd say, you know, like Kelly says, it's no sense in addressing it till we get some guidance and we know what's going on.
Yeah.
Kelly, can you speak at all to the, the Newsom administration is trying to put forth a plan to get the kids back end of January, primarily primary kids, the younger kiddos. He's offering, I think, $2 billion to, I don't know where that'll go, but to try and form some kind of an implementation budget?
Yeah, so that's the grant piece I was talking about earlier.
Okay.
You have to fill out a couple of things you got to do. One is you have to have a COVID school safety plan developed, and you have to have a ratified agreement with your labor organizations before they would release the money. And in part of that COVID safety plan for students is you have to have student COVID testing. I don't know how in the heck school districts would pull that off, because I cannot make a child go get a COVID test. Can't do it. I mean, a parent, you know, tells me, nope, I'm not doing it. What, what am I going to do? Go pull them out of their house? So it's going to be interesting. You know, the legislature is, there's some powerful legislators that want to go a lot more money in getting at least, you know, K, K6 back in school than the governor. Some of the policies, politics of this that, that I'm hearing is the governor made this proposal because he's trying to stave off recall because one of the things people are most upset is about schools. Whether it's his fault or not, I'm not speaking to that. I'm just saying that's some of the politics behind it is, is he's hoping that by trying to get schools open, that would help prevent the, you know, the recall. By putting a ton of money into the education budget, that might help end the recall as well, because he's saying I'm for kids. And, you know, that's always a popular stance with any politician, when they're for kids, whether on the right or on the left. So I think we, you know, so he's made his proposed budget. You know, typically, it's not till May, we get the May revise of what money's really in the coffers. And then they usually settle in June, right? After the legislature marks it up and they debate it and they argue, and they come to their, their compromised positions. The recall effort could really hamstring him in his power to negotiate with the legislature. If he's under recall, and we're going to have to have an election where anybody can run and just the majority of vote winner gets, gets, gets elected. If you remember, I think Schwarzenegger had 46% of the vote when, when he got elected, when Gray Davis was recalled. So you know, that's all playing a part in all of this. So it's just kind of wait and see. But this grant thing, they wanted to, with his $2 billion you're talking about, David, he wanted our plans in place by February 1st. Probably no way, I mean, we're trying to have it ready, but the thing is, is if we were to take the money, the money isn't even going to pay for all the testing he's requiring in the plan for the rest of the year. We'd get, we'd get to like mid-March. You know, so, and so the, the large urban school districts have come out hard against him. This, his grant proposal, they're saying it's not enough money. And a lot of, a lot of superintendents I talked to, they'd just rather and put the money into getting the vaccine out to staffs. So we'll see.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 9.1, CSBA policy updates.
All right, we've got another chunk of CSBA policy updates for you this month. It's about an inch thick. It's a little lighter than normal. So looking at, having read them, you know, read all of them, there's one, two on awards for achievement. There's two on awards for achievement that aren't applicable. And then there's high school proficiency equivalency and graduation requirements that aren't applicable to us. The rest is all boilerplate language of how they've rewritten the laws, and it just mirrors the laws. So those are okay. So on my cheat sheet, all the ones that are applicable to us, I'm saying we should adopt. It would be my recommendation. There's a couple pages of them, if you want to read them. They, they range from, you know, the LCAP to uniform complaint procedures to what political activities your labor organizations can do, immunizations, preschool, early childhood, education requirements and, and credential requirements. I mean, it's all kind of just, it's the law, you know, it's just restating what the laws are. So actually a simpler packet this time.
Okay.
So your recommendation is to approve the, the policies. We haven't presented them.
Yeah, you have them in your packet, but there's.
Do we? I missed them then.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
They were up, they're in there. But there, there's two on awards for achievement. Those are high school.
Yeah, yeah, and I heard, yeah.
Then there's one, two, three, four more on graduation and proficiency requirements for high school that are not applicable. The rest are all, are, I'm recommending we approve.
Okay. All right. Well, based on that, I'll move, we approve the policy updates.
This is Mark Hallberg. I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bellis, second by Mr. Hallberg. Roll call, Michael Bellis.
Hi.
Mark Hallberg?
Hi.
Justin Rednall?
Hi.
David Slane?
Hi.
Rob Congies are I. Okay. And we move on to item 9.2, information item, budget update.
So, so this is kind of a standing item we always have in January, because it's when we, we start beginning working on this, because the governor's budget comes out, like we just talked about. We've just now put out our intent to return forms to our staff, and we're, we're getting those back within the next week. Once we get those, then we know who's planning to come back, who's, you know, moving to wherever, you know, et cetera, et cetera, who might be retiring. And then we can start building our staffing priorities and budget development. I will tell you that the California is unbelievably, after COVID and everything being closed, it's flushing money. Because as the stock market goes, California goes. As long as no more big tech companies move out. That's, they keep moving out, then the stock market isn't going to matter. But California is, is far ahead of where their, their dire projections were, and that's why the governor added $14 billion to the education budget over last year. But anyway, so in the next month or so, we'll be bringing more of this to your attention. And if we have staffing issues or staffing requests or increases, those kinds of things, those priorities, we'll be bringing those to you. Anne, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, you said it just right.
Aw, thank you. I will, I will tell you, there is some good news. Bowman has now received all their bond money.
Oh.
So next month, we'll be starting to talk about some of those priorities of that. You know, we have a, I think it's a 40,000, I think it's $40,000. I have a call into Derek, that $40,000 bill outstanding still with JK architecture. But we'll start talking about, you know, direction of the board as far as do we pay ourselves back? Do we, what do, what do you want to do with it type thing? But we did receive it, has a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of paperwork to get that money. And remember, it was passed in 2016, so it's 2021. It only took you five years. So. But I'm glad, I'm glad we got it before July 1st, let me just say it that way.
Congratulations.
Yeah, one less untied shoe left, you know.
That's good to hear.
That was about 3.2.
Excellent.
But it's less than that now. No, I was gonna make a joke. I was gonna say, I stopped by Thunder Valley today. I need to report, no, just kidding.
You weren't supposed to talk about that.
So anyway, between the governor's budget and the bond, I mean, at least for a year, you're out of the woods. I will tell you, in the governor's budget, the out years, he's not so positive. Maybe he knows there's more tech companies leaving. I don't know. Or there's more, you know, taxes coming from the federal government that's gonna slow things down. I don't know. We go to our Capitol Advisors meeting next week where we hear all the real ins and outs of the budget. I'm just giving you what I know at this point. We haven't had our debriefing yet from the lobbyists who really know the ins and outs. But I won't be asking the question this year, would you know when the bond money's coming? Because I've asked that for five years, so.
Not for us, anyway.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, item 9.3, review the current, review progress of the current board goals and objectives.
Okay, so the board goals are the last pages of your packet. And so just as kind of a mid-year update, I will tell you, Anne has done a fabulous job managing our CARES Act money. And I think, I think we've done a good job of trying to provide for teachers everything they need to deal with the pandemic and situation and spending that CARES Act dollars on that. So when we've had to purchase something, if we could get it under the CARES Act, we've done it instead of out of our general fund. A lot. We've done that a lot, let me just say it that way. So I think our fiscal solvency, we're gonna make it through the state deferrals if the governor's budget stays true because he wants to give those back. We have completed the MOU with our labor union. I think we've successfully recruited and employed a superintendent principal for next year. We'll see how good she does and how successful it is. I'm just making sure she's still listening. Our enrollment is down, you know, 40 kids or so. But like I said, I think we're still better than 99% of most of the districts around. Like I said, I compare us a lot to Newcastle. They're down over 120 kids. So our master plan, I think we finished all our construction repairs and we've completed the bond. The building community partnerships, that can start happening in the spring if you decide to use some of your bond money to build the fields. And we can start looking at constructability plans for that. On the curriculum side, I think we've, the teachers especially, a shout out to them. It worked really hard to develop and improve their distance learning abilities. You know, it's all so foreign and it's not something they were trained for. And it's taken time. We've done the MOU for more onsite instruction and hopefully, you know, God willing, that we can get to orange and yellow level and get more kids back here five days a week. Honestly, on number four, improving state test scores, I'm not worried about it. Haven't thought about it. The state has cut the state test in half. They came out with some FAQs the other day saying kids can take part of it at home or they can take and then come to school and take part of it. Well, I don't know how you have any test security if you're taking something at home. You know, I mean, a lot of parents just be answering the questions for them, right? So I'm not really sure how that's gonna work, and I'm not sure the state is either with their state testing. Our new staff, the few that we've had, you know, we have one new teacher and she's out on maternity leave right now, had a new baby. And we've got a couple more that are younger teachers, are expecting babies this spring. So we're supporting them with their infants and their maternity leave. Anne has to do a lot of work on that and work with them and meet with them, a lot. There is a lot more to family leave than there used to be back in the days when my kids were born. You got six weeks and no matter how you tried to slice it or turn it or manipulate it, you got six weeks. And now it's, it goes much more than that. Those 12, 18, all year, can go through the summer and then extend into the next year. I mean, you've got to be an attorney to understand all the family leave, the, you know, laws that we deal with. So Anne's doing a great job with that and works with our SIG Attorney, who's free, Schools Insurance Group Attorney, Patty Ayers, who's a great resource. So we've been supporting them on that. I think we've supported all our staff with, you know, all the things COVID, all the things we've had to do. At least I feel like we've tried. You know, nothing's perfect and everything is hard right now for families, for teachers, for kids. And we just keep trying to give it as much sense of normalcy as we can. So I would say all in all, for our goals, I think we're doing a pretty good job of meeting the majority of them. You know, the master plan one, those are still, a couple of those outstanding, depending on what you want to do in the future. And like I said, state testing, I don't even know what we're gonna, what kind of scores we're gonna get. They were, like I said, they cut the test in half already. And remember, last year, they didn't do state testing, so we'll see. Okay?
Okay.
Questions?
I have one question, Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Back from the past, which the, I wish this is our major problem. The concrete on the gym, I know, is it staying in place?
Yes, sir.
Cool.
Yeah, that stuff worked. And we also repaired the elevator pit. I think we talked about that earlier this year. And that's holding, there's no water going into that. So fingers and all that are crossed. Anne, I never agreed with Clark and Sullivan to give them a hold harmless going forward, that there was some kind of natural aquifer or anything. I just said, you can't, you don't know that and we don't know that. We just know we got watered. So that's where that was left. If something happens in the future.
Wonderful. Good.
Yeah.
All right, well, I guess if anybody else has any more questions?
We didn't, Rob, we skipped a board report. I didn't know if anybody had a board report. That's way back when, but...
You're right, we did skip that. Any board report? Anybody like to speak to that? Nope? Okay.
We have a real short closed session, closed session for a personnel matter. If we could go to the other link once we're done here, just a reminder.
All right, that sounds good. So then I guess we'll close this meeting, it's 7:59. Thank you all for joining us. And we'll see you in a month, hopefully in person.
Yes. Okay, we'll see you on the other link in a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.